And I'd like to invite the Vanderbilt Peabody freshman group who came to visit us today to all stand collectively to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, or put a motion out there to adopt the agenda.
Senator.
Actually, I'd like to make a minute. Can I pull the...oh, it's not on the consent agenda.
Nope.
No.
This isn't the consent agenda.
Got it.
All right. We're gonna look for an emotion again to adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
All right. Adopted and seconded by Zach Young and Cheryl Mays. All of those in favor? All right. Unanimous approval. Next, we have awards and recognitions, and we will turn it over to Dr. Battle.
All right. Thank you so much, Vice Chair Nabah McKenney, and good evening again to all of our school board members. I'm excited to celebrate an outstanding student athlete tonight. Christopher Barber is a senior at Glencliff High School who has a 3.3 grade point average and has played offensive guard, defensive tackle, and special teams for the Colts. Christopher, would you please come on up to the podium and face this audience who's here to celebrate you tonight? So, y'all listen closely. Christopher is known for being a strong role model for his peers in the classroom, as well as on the practice and playing fields at Glencliff. The person who nominated him for the award I'm about to mention said Christopher helps his teammates by providing them support and encouragement to navigate challenging situations and circumstances, and also that he is committed to constant self-improvement. He puts the team before himself and promotes a spirit of inclusion and collaboration. For all of these winning qualities, Christopher was honored by the Tennessee Titans before their game on Sunday, September 15th with the NFL Latino Excellence in Youth Football Award. Let's give it up for Christopher. Christopher, congratulations on this great honor. We want you to keep leading. We want you to keep doing what you're doing, and we would love to grab a photo with you in honor of your recognition before you leave. So stay right there. A few of us are gonna come up and join you, and please know that we're so proud of all that you do. Oh, and the Glencliff team. Principal Wilson is here and team. Great. We'd love the entire team to come up, and if there's anybody else supporting Christopher here today, we'd love to grab a photo. Thank you.
Glencliff is the best high school ever.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. And I didn't announce in the beginning. I am Vice Chair Nabah McKenney. I'm serving as the lead or the chair today. Ms. Chair Player is unable to be at the meeting today, so I'm serving in place of her for this meeting. However, she is online, even though we can't see her, so you heard her voice in the air. So because we do have a member that is online, any votes that we do moving forward, any votes that we do have to be done by roll call, and so we're gonna go back and do the adoption of the agenda. However, we will have to do that roll call again. So if we could again make an announcement, make a motion for adoption of the agenda as written.
Second.
All right. Again, we have it by Zach Young and Cheryl Mays, and then we will take an individual count. David Sevier.
Mr. Taylor. Mr. Taylor votes aye. Mr. Young. Mr. Young votes aye. Vice Chair Nabah McKenney.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Ms. Fane.
Aye.
Ms. Fane votes aye. Ms. Mays.
Aye.
Ms. Mays votes aye. Ms. O'Hara Block.
Aye.
Ms. O'Hara Block votes aye. Ms. Tyler.
Aye.
Ms. Tyler votes aye. Chair Player.
Aye.
Chair Player votes aye. Madam Vice Chair, eight ayes, one not present.
All right. Thank you so much. Now, we're on to the director's report, and we will turn that back over to Dr. Battle.
Thank you again, Vice Chair Nabah McKenney and board members. This evening, we will walk through a couple of presentations that highlight some of the work we're doing to support our staff and students. First, one of the recurring requests we've heard from our teachers and support staff over the years is for high-quality professional development and ample planning time to both prepare for the school year and grow in their profession. In response, we've significantly increased our investment in professional development opportunities, added more paid PD and planning days, and implemented systems and structures to ensure these offerings are effective. Stephanie Waika, our Executive Director, Professional Learning and Growth, will provide a recap of our summer professional development program. She will share how our investments have paid off and how we're using feedback and insight to continuously improve and plan for future success. Following Stephanie, we will hear from our Director of Athletics, excuse me, Director of High School Athletics, Mark North, and our Director of Elementary and Middle School Athletics, Penny Howard. They'll present on the accomplishments and highlights from our athletic programs, showcasing the ways we're providing more opportunities for students to develop their talents and build relationships that extend beyond sports. As many of you know, I'm a former student athlete, and my experience not only opened doors for college opportunities, but also shaped me as an individual by instilling qualities like grit determination and the value of teamwork in achieving success. So this time, I would like for Stephanie to proceed with her presentation, excuse me, Executive Director Stephanie Waika, to proceed with her presentation grounded in our professional learning program from this past summer. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Player, Vice Chair Nabah McKenney, Dr. Battle, and board members. It's an honor to be with you all tonight to provide you with an update of our summer professional learning programs and how we're continuing to build on the momentum that we've made this summer. And so I'd like to start by anchoring our time in our signature initiatives, focus outcomes, and core tenets. At the heart of our district-wide professional learning system is our core tenet of empower and equip leaders at all levels, and we're gonna highlight this evening as a driving force for our professional learning systems that we use in MNPS. As we shared at our last board meeting where we had some updates on our ESSAR expenditures and our allocations of those resources, MNPS has strategically leveraged resources to grow our staff. We have leveraged ESSAR, Title funding, and local dollars to implement a true professional learning system. And so our summer professional learning strategies use the processes you see here on this slide to be, to develop a robust summer catalog. This includes building collaboration by gathering input and feedback on existing challenges and needs in our schools. The vision-setting groups that are mentioned in the center of this also engage in data analysis, taking a deep dive into student growth and achievement data, teacher practice, leadership practice, and then also climate and culture data. This is used to identify specific professional learning practices and learning targets that then our support hub departments plan and develop clear professional learning around. Before we jump into the more specifics about our professional learning offered this summer, I'd like us to revisit the importance of leadership development in our professional learning system. The Wallace Foundation found in their landmark study how leadership influences student learning just how critical the work of principals is in impacting student learning, and we know if we want to deliver a great public education to every student every day, one of our core strategies for professional learning must be focused on strategic leadership development to drive the offerings for all of our staff. So MNPS leveraged the three strategies you see here on this screen for our summer professional learning. Strategic and responsive leadership development, instructional development directly tied to our focused outcomes and signature initiatives, followed by instructional planning days to support high-quality Tier One instruction during Quarter One. One of the needs that was identified by vision-setting groups when planning for summer professional learning was to focus on the coherence of the MNPS school leadership plays, and we began to address this process during principal landing where principals had some time to reflect on their successes and challenges on connecting and leveraging those plays. The coherence of our leadership plays was further explored during principal launch in July. And at the end of that session with principal launch, new to this year was, in addition, the Instructional Leadership Team Network kickoff, which was requested by principals and instructional leadership team as an opportunity to jumpstart continuous improvement efforts for the school year and our schools, and also provide opportunities for our high-performing teaming and leadership supports. This summer, over 120 unique offerings in support of our focus outcomes and signature initiatives were provided. There were over 40 opportunities in support of high-quality Tier One instruction for all content areas. We also hosted the Academies of Nashville Summer Institute for all high school staff in our traditional schools that have an Academy of Nashville pathway. We also hosted the SEL Conference, an avid teacher leadership academy focused on empowering and equipping our classroom avid elective teachers with teacher leadership skills, and then our new teacher launch where we focused on welcoming and connecting our newest teachers to the vision of teaching and learning in MNPS. Across all of our employee groups and professional learning offerings, 33,877 completed professional learning hours occurred this summer. We provide an anonymous evaluation survey to staff that complete summer professional learning, and of the survey respondents, you can see the data here. 94% found the sessions to be valuable. 95% found the sessions to be relevant to their role. 96% found the session increased their knowledge and skills, and 95% found that they mastered the learning objectives in the session. Our support hub departments utilize this data to reflect on the professional learning they offered, but then also consider next steps and additional supports for our schools as we move into the school year. In July, instructional staff and classroom associates had the opportunity to clean up to, complete up to five days of instructional planning. During these days, teachers, classroom associates, and collaborative teams engaged in planning to prepare for Quarter One. And as they were planning, our staff had access to all Quarter One scope and sequence instructional materials, and also access to support hub staff to support their planning processes in their schools. As a special note, 8,251 planning days were completed by our staff this summer. So, what's next? During the 2024-2025 school year, we're really excited to be able to continue the momentum and strategic learning flow that we began this summer. We have a robust catalog of offerings for teacher and staff-selected professional learning that's also complemented by school-based professional learning that our schools develop in service of their continuous improvement efforts happening at their schools, and those take place during their stockpiled professional development days, but also during their faculty meetings where they're providing professional development. Our principal, assistant principal, and instructional leadership team networks are designed to build upon the learning from this summer and provide collaborative opportunities to not only go deeper in the work, but also reflect on the implementation of the practices that they've gained this summer. These opportunities are supported through a variety of professional learning for new and aspiring leaders, whether they be teacher leaders or administrative leaders, and then additionally, weekly professional learning happens within the Division of Academics in schools to also, to support these practices. Our support hub departments are in schools, day in and day out, providing job-embedded professional learning to continue the implementation of the practices that were gained this summer. Principals and executive directors of schools work side-by-side to monitor implementation and support their instructional leadership teams in refining their continuous improvement efforts. And support hub departments then use the information that they're gaining through this monitoring to, along with feedback from their schools, to develop responsive professional learning and resources that are being provided throughout the school year. So, thank you for your continued support of professional learning. This system that and the processes that we engage in allow MNPS to empower our leaders at every level, which ultimately then ensures that we can ensure that every student is known. As we close our time together, I'd like to share a few ways the board can help support them, our professional learning system. First, of course, reference our professional learning system and the processes when you're speaking with constituents, and really help our stakeholders understand that MNPS is committed to empowering and equipping leaders at all levels. We also would benefit from your continued advocacy for the allocation of fiscal and personnel resources to support evidence-based job embedded professional learning. From funding for the stipends that we are able to provide teachers for summer professional learning to even classroom associates that are covering classrooms so teachers can take time and observe each other implementing the practices and reflect and refine on their work, these resources are critically important for the success of our professional learning system. And finally, your advocacy at the state and national level for the full funding of Title II Part A matters. MNPS leverages these dollars in a variety of ways to support our nationally-recognized professional learning system and to provide those ongoing opportunities for our staff. And at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Battle.
Thank you so much, Director Waika. I'm gonna go ahead and invite Mark North. We'll run through both presentations. That way, if you see any connections between them, you'll have the space and time to engage with the team.
Good evening, Board Chair Player, Vice Chair Nabah McKenney, Dr. Battle, members of the board. I'm Mark North, Athletics Director for High Schools. It's an honor to be here representing the Athletics Department. It's an honor to work with the best coaches, administrators, and students in the state, bar none. Thank you for your support and encouragement. This work touches on all the focused outcomes. We know that engaged students perform better in the classroom and attend school more often. The experience and skills our students learn in athletics help them develop their SEL competencies and often give our students a pathway to post-secondary opportunities. A couple of years ago, the best high school basketball player in the country played right here in MNPS. When he graduated from Kane Ridge High School, he was college and career-ready. He was All SEC and All American in college and was the second player chosen in the NBA draft. During All-Star Weekend, he credited playing for his hometown high school rather than playing at a national prep school as a driving force in his success. He is proud of his hometown school. We are proud of him, and we're proud of the role his coaches, teachers, and teammates played in his success. Our programs provide opportunities for elite athletes, for those just learning a new sport, and for everyone in between. When we provide robust, rigorous, and engaging athletics opportunities, our students shine and thrive. A lot has changed in athletics landscape in the last few years, and we're excited to share some examples. As you know, we have started a program to enhance our athletics facilities and turf fields. Our students and teams deserve great facilities, and thanks to the continued support and investment of the Tennessee Titans, the mayor, and the Metro Council, we installed three turf fields last year and three this year. They are spectacular. The next four fields are in the design phase, and we hope, I dare say expect, those four to be completed by the start of the fall season next year, certainly by this time next year. Those four are Antioch, Kane Ridge, Hunter's Lane, and Glencliff. Success in competition at the state level. Now, we have a goal to win a state championship in every season, fall, winter, and spring. Last school year, '23-'24, we did just that with Pearl Cone winning a football state championship in the fall, our first in 15 years. McGavick Student Athlete won the girls' wrestling state championship in the winter, and East Nashville won the girls' track and field championship in the spring. That doesn't even mention, which I will now, so, several relay state championships in track and field, and about a dozen individual state championships in track and field.
Yeah.
Now, in boys' basketball last year, we had three teams in the state tournament. And the year before that, we had three teams in the state tournament. That's six teams from six different high schools in two years. That is remarkable. And if you had the previous year, it's eight teams from seven high schools and a state championship. In the past three years, we've won team state championships in volleyball, football, boys' basketball, boys' track, and three team championships in girls' track. We had at least one football team in a state championship game the past three years, and two teams in state championship games the past two years. That is unprecedented, and we're not satisfied. We will continue to improve and continue to move forward. I want to talk now about some new sports, some new opportunities that we are providing students, more students, to participate in interscholastic athletics. Now, these are all new, so like, I guess like all of us, they are a work in progress, but we are really excited about them. First of all, it's girls' flag football. Now, Metro Schools pioneered the sport in Tennessee. The girls love it. It is so much fun. The coaches love it. Even the officials enjoy the game. It has been a great experience. Seeing two years of a successful, thriving, exciting MNPS league, T double S double A voted to sanction girls' flag football as an official sport statewide. We are proud of our history, our part in the history of girls' flag football in Tennessee, and appreciate the encouragement and support from the Tennessee Titans and the NFL. We're also adding, T double S double A added this year as a sanctioned sport, lacrosse, both boys' lacrosse and girls' lacrosse, and that will start as a sanctioned sport this spring. We are looking forward to growing the sport in our schools, and we expect to compete at a state level right away. Our turf fields include the field markings for Unified Sports. Unified Sports is a partnership between T double S double A and Special Olympics. Each team, and we're gonna go through this a little bit, this is a really, a really neat program. Each team is comprised of approximately an equal number of students with and without intellectual disabilities. Those with disabilities are referred to in the rules as athletes, and those without are called partners. They are all members of the team. The games, matches, and meets are genuine competition experiences. Now, there are three unified sports in Tennessee. Bowling in the winter, Unified Track and Field in the spring, and T double S double A is just launching Flag Football, Unified Flag Football this year with an invitation to become a sanctioned sport in the future. Unified Track and Field events are 100 meters, long jump, shot put, and the 4x100. Partners and athletes compete in each event. We've qualified for the state meet in Murfreesboro each of the past two years and expect several schools to do so again this May. Now, in bowling, it is one athlete and two partners on a team, and they each bowl several frames. The athlete bowls frames 1, 4, 7, and 10. One partner bowls frames 2, 5, and 8, and another partner bowls frames 3, 6, and 9. That gets all 10 of them. The Unified State Bowling Champ, State Championship, Unified Bowling State Championship is January 24th in Smyrna. And we will continue to promote and increase our unified sport, and we appreciate the hard work and partnership with the Metro Schools Exceptional Education Department, T double S double A, and Special Olympics. Another new opportunity is academic in nature. It is a elective course available to teach students to be game officials. There are, for example, 15 students taking the course at Stratford. It opens the door in a field that is in high demand and provides opportunities for part-time employment immediately and really for a lifetime. We're really excited about that. One other goal that we set is to earn more T double S double A Academic Achievement Awards than any other school district, and we did that by a wide margin. They are listed on the T double S double A website. There are 96 MNPS teams that earned an academic award in '23-'24, and it's measured by standards set by T double S double A. All, 15 schools. Those 96 teams represent 15 different high schools, and those are all the high schools with athletics programs. Making that a goal not only keeps us focused on academics and gives us a way to measure progress, it also empowers students by acknowledging and celebrating their accomplishments in the classroom. Now, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Penny Howard, Director of Elementary and Middle School Athletics, so she can share the district strategy for preparing our younger student athletes. Penny?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Battle. Elementary and middle is a lot different than high school. Middle, middle of anything is pretty hard. Halfway through running the mile, you wonder why you even bought the shoes. Halfway through school, you have no idea what you want to do. Middle age, well, that's a story all by itself. But here in the middle school athletics in the district, we take pride in developing, making a commitment to community, and showing our kids the greatness that is within. And elementary got a special treat for it. Elementary athletics, in its third year, has had 57 schools participate in soccer, 53 in cross-country, and of the participating students, we have over 900, close to 1,000 students that come out on Saturday mornings at 8:00 in the morning and run a mile or play a 7v7 soccer game. And not only do the kids show up, but it's thousands of community members, grandparents, teachers, neighbors, everyone coming out in support. We even have a drum line at a couple of the soccer games. At each of the events, there are three regular season events culminating in one city championship. culminating in one city championship. Also added for elementary athletics, we will have, in the winter, an elementary winter basketball pilot, which will be hosted at Stratford High School. This event will have the appearance. It will, it will include six priority schools, which include Cochrane, Jones, Padilla, Robert Churchwell, Park Avenue, Belshire, and Amqui. These teams will have cross-court play on Saturday mornings. And we will also be partnering with that amazing program that Mark spoke of at the high school, where the young junior officials will be officiating, not just teaching them the Xs and Os of the game, but helping them to understand in the flow of play how to make a transition as they head into middle school with aspirations of being an athlete. New to elementary and middle school athletics, development is huge and it's on the forefront of all of our goals. Beginning winter 2024, we will host soccer, track and field, and basketball clinics for middle school students. It helps to refine their skills, preparing them for high school level of play. But on an elementary level, it helps, actually helps them to have confidence as they continue and decide whether they're going to play in the years incoming. Last year, we hosted six clinics and plan to host ten clinics this school year. Additionally, providing equitable access to our students with health supports. All students now in the HERO program will receive free or discounted sports physicals through a partnership with Mahari Saltwagon Free Clinic. Additionally, we have provided Kid Guard liability insurance coverage for all MNPS student athletes, including student athletes who do not and currently, are not currently insured, excuse me. Additionally, we have updated the sports physical family history segment to now be available in Spanish, Arabic, Somali, and Kurdish. So our middle school celebrations. In our third year as members of TMS double A, we have 34 middle schools this year. Added to our schools are Neely's Bin Elementary, K through 8, Amqui, K through 8, and Brick Church. Four state records have been broken. Eight state champions, 11 state first runner-ups, one NFHS Student Athlete Award of Excellence recipient, and numerous T double S double A Academic Achievement Award recipients. Our first cross-country city champion was named on September the 11th with Meg's Magnet Girls Team winning and JT Moore Boys. And they are headed on their trajectory towards a state championship. This week, on Thursday and Friday, we will be contesting in the sectionals as we expect to have representation at the state. Also, our all-sports award leader for 2024 after cross-country is JT Moore Middle School. Upcoming events for middle school? Elementary Cross Country, Cross Country City Championship. This Saturday at the Hermitage Cross Country Course, September 28th, the girls varsity race begins at 8:00 a.m. Come there. It's the place to be. Middle School Cross Country State Championship will be held at Weekly Park in Crossfield, Tennessee, October the 5th. Girls Volleyball City Championship, September 30th and October 1st will be held at Overton High School. And Girls Soccer City Championship will be held October 14th and 16th. The location to be announced. And our Middle School Football City Championship, November 7th. Location to be announced. Mark?
All right. For most of our fall sports, we're starting postseason, either started it this week or next week. And you see listed there the dates and locations of the upcoming state championships, golf, girls volleyball, and girls soccer in October, cross-country, and cheerleading in November, and football state championship, December 6 and 7. Also listed on the upcoming events is the Basketball Media Day over at the Martin Center on November 6th and our basketball jamboree at various sites on November 14. Ways you can help and support. The best way to support, for everybody in the community really, is to attend a game. Come and support the players, student athletes, the cheerleaders, the band, the coaches, the schools. Also, promote our new elementary athletics programs. They're truly unique. Promote them to your families, your friends, your associates. And come see a game, particularly on our new wonderful and beautiful turf fields, whether it's soccer or lacrosse or football. Come see a game. We'd love to see you there. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mark and Penny. So we're extremely proud, extremely proud of the work happening with our professional learning planning in our department as well as athletics. And I just got to brag a little bit on how improved our athletic programs continue to move really strong presence in state championships as well as our ability to offer elementary sports that is not common across the country. We're able to do so at no cost to our families. And so it just really opens up opportunities and just foundational experiences for our young student athletes. So really excited about that. I will close out my comments. And Chair Vice Chair, I will turn it over to you for any discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Battle and your team for the presentation. We will now open it up to discussion or questions. Starting with Board Member Tyler.
Yeah, I have a few questions. I'll start with the athletics. When we're looking at the elementary athletics, I know that all of the meets and all the soccer games have been held at the same location, which is not necessarily in the middle of the city. It's kind of on one side. Are there any plans to open that up so that there could be a chance for families who live on the other side of town to attend more games closer to where they live?
Yeah, so we're pioneering this elementary athletic space. And so instead of doing nothing, we decided to do something to open up these opportunities. But we're very fortunate in this space because, and I'm sure we might get to this at some point, we started this programming during the ESAR era, which is closing and just next Monday is it, right? And so we have been trying to be creative in building partnerships and opportunities. And we're very fortunate with the partners we do have who are either donating space and time or doing so at a reduced cost. And so they, through those partnerships, we've been able to launch these opportunities, i.e. the elementary soccer as well as basketball and cross-country. Thank you. And so we're in a space where we're starting, we're building this out. If you've not been out there, it is a beautiful sight. Everyone comes to cheer on their babies. And it's really exciting. But we're in a space right now that as we're building and providing opportunities, we will have to look at additional investment that would allow us to do things like spread it out across the city. And so in a nutshell, that's kind of the state of those access points. But again, this is an opportunity for me to publicly thank those partners in those spaces of coming alongside us and giving us the opportunity to do this. A.D. Howard, did you want to add anything to that?
Yes. We really want to have the locations where both for the soccer is at the Gail View, which is by the airport, as well as cross-country to accommodate for the larger number of school participants in the Hermitage. So we really make it that person happy and safe where everything goes all about plus to that.
Yeah, my son played in the soccer last year as a fifth grader and we loved it, but it was hard for us to get from the far west side of town all the way.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet. But we will be, we will be asking for some personal love.
I'd promise many parents I would be asking about the opportunity to open up home fields in other locations. So, but yes, no, it's fabulous. And it's exciting to see everybody come out and to see the kids learn new things and to not have to make an investment before they're ready and to just let them enjoy playing and not make it so competitive, but to have them learn new things about the way their body works and how it moves. And that, I think, is the key takeaway from there. So, and it has been a well-loved thing, so we've really enjoyed that. And then I also had a question about the summer professional learning. So one of the things that you had talked about at the very beginning was about building collaboration, examining that data to figure out which schools needed which types of professional learning. And so one of the things I just wanted to hear, are we still using the Panorama survey for that? Or what tool are we using to solicit that feedback from our schools and our teachers?
Director Waika, if you want to talk specifically around the PD I'm surveying and if we need to zoom out more generally, we can do that as well.
Absolutely. So we synthesize from multiple data sources. One of those is the Panorama survey because there is a whole section of it specific to professional learning. So that allows us to identify trends at a district, a quadrant, a network, and then school levels. We additionally also have feedback loops with our stakeholders from teachers, teacher leaders, other staff, staff groups, and our principals on frequent cadences that we utilize as well.
Okay. And just, and is that the same, that feedback loop? That's how you're soliciting that feedback? Okay. Because that was my other question, just individual schools. How are you getting that data? But it sounds like you just answered that. So, thank you.
Board Member Fain?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to give a kudos to the athletic staff, not only the administration. Thank you for the data, but just the coaches and the support from like the community. Like you spoke, you were a former athlete. I was too. And so I know how important.
We learned.
And so I learned early how important it is just to have that time dedicated to those students. Just speaking, like I say all the time, I was a parent of MNPS before I was a board member. And just looking at my son and the scholarship offers and the opportunities he's had, just being an athlete, I don't think we realize how dedicated those, you know, the staff are, those coaches. And like I said, the supportive staff and the community, it's a big thing. And so kudos to all the athletes, all the coaches that are making, you know, that are making these wonderful things happen. Because these kids, these kids are awesome. And the coaches and the staff are too, especially Pearl Cone.
Member O'Hara Block?
I wanted to just recognize a couple of things. One, I love that the, this is not going to shock anyone, but I love that the first slide on professional learning is actually about the, the way that school leadership is actually like the number one thing that is considered when thinking about professional learning across a school. And all of the references, including the question that Member Tyler just asked, I was interested in the same kind of thing about teacher feedback. So I love just everything about the way we're being really intentional about professional learning from top to bottom within a school. And I do hope that educators feel like they have the ability to say. I mean, it's pretty remarkable to see a survey that says that folks, 95% of folks on average are feeling like things are valuable and relevant. You don't always hear that from people, but the fact that you're seeing that in survey data is important. So I would also encourage educators that if they don't feel as though things are useful, that is the opportunity to say it. So it is not as useful if it is said to us sort of off, you know, without it being in the line of, hey, we're getting this professional development and it is actually not useful to me. Because if what we see and if what the district sees is that actually what people are getting feels useful and relevant, then we're going to keep doing what feels like it's the right decision. So anyway, that's just a plug for thanks for using data. And also, if you feel like it's not working, then you got to say it when you have the opportunity to say it. And then the other thing is just, I want to say how, I have a child who has played, is now playing soccer in high school, but played through middle school. And I have seen the level of girls' soccer in this district improve tremendously over the last like three years, which I would say must have something to do with the fact that we're providing opportunities for students at school at the elementary level to participate in sports. So it's cool to see the level of quality go up as a result of some of the things that are being done. So thank you for making what doesn't always feel like an equitable opportunity in sport, that is soccer, cross-country, whatever the case might be, more available to kids. It is, I see it making a difference.
Student Board Member Winn?
Thank you. I just had a comment. As a student athlete myself, me and Dr. Battle played for the same coach. Shout out Coach Gaines. Yeah, I was the most unathletic, uncoordinated person up until the eighth grade, literally. So to see these opportunities open up for elementary schoolers and middle schoolers and more sports and officiating training as a coach and somebody that's officiated in volleyball, I think it's really great. It's a great post-secondary opportunity. Thank you to all the coaches that do this work for these kids and all the work that's going on behind it.
I got so excited about my comments, I forgot to ask my question. Which is, I'm just, I don't feel like I have a really good sense. And I get this question from student athletes specifically at my dinner table, but also in other situations. How do we, how do we make decisions and choices at the district level and at the school levels about what gets funded and how? And, you know, what, if anything, do we need to make sure that we're doing a good job of continuing to do that equitably across sports?
All right. I'll invite both our athletic directors back up. Is there a comment in the elementary space? We are investing in that expansion of the program. High school, we have both revenue and non-revenue generating sports in high school and in middle school. But Mark and Penny, feel free to add anything to that.
Part of why attending a game is so important is that much of those teams' funding comes from the sale of tickets. And so encourage your friends, your neighbors, to attend those games. It's a great way, a great way to support.
Just doing what you're doing, continuing to talk about what you're seeing. It's not a week that doesn't pass where I'm somewhere that has nothing to do with athletics and I run into a parent who has, maybe in their occupation, they say, I want you to meet this person because we've been waiting for this for elementary. That is a phrase that I've heard in the past year or two. We've been waiting for this. And so it is wanted. Keep talking about it. Keep having smiles on your faces when you're talking about it. And then keep speaking about it with the anticipation of wanting more.
So just to kind of summarize this, there is very limited funding at the support hub level to, to, to support overall athletics. Most of the individual teams are either revenue generating, which means they sell tickets and can support their program. It usually also comes with some level of fundraising. And then your non-revenue generating tickets are supported by revenue sports and/or their own fundraising. That's particularly at the secondary level, middle school and high school. And again, in elementary school, it was an initiative that we funded through our non-recurring ESAR funding. And so if the question is how the board can support, you should anticipate additional conversation and investments in the space so that we can maintain because we've already had to make some significant adjustments this year as we're preparing for ESAR fund sunsetting. But we didn't want to keep that from us. Just even if it was a short amount of time providing it, our goal is that we're in this for the long haul. But we will have to continue to secure funding, particularly in our operating budget so that we can guarantee these experiences year after year.
One thing we do centrally that probably happened about 13 years ago because the schools were responsible for it, but we, we took it on because it was almost impossible to pay for. And that's security at ballgames. And our athletics trainers are provided at everyone's ballgames, everyone's, particularly football and basketball games that have the largest crowds. And the athletic trainers are at the practices and the, and the games from Vanderbilt, Sports Medicine, and they are fantastic. So that's.
Thank you. In addition to that funding piece, I would just welcome, you know, out there in the universe, any community business nonprofit organizations that would like to support elementary athletics. Sports teams. We'd appreciate you.
Just throwing that out there in the universe. And then I'm going to turn it over to Board Member Young.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I recognize this is, might slightly be going down a rabbit hole we don't, might be better to be followed up on. But speaking of revenue and things, and I think I was listening to a podcast the other day, NIL, that was it, name, image, likeness, I think is what it stands for. Do we, I mean, I think we're starting to see that in some cases with some student athletes at the high school level. I think TWS double A's maybe formulated some rules. Do we have, does MNPS have a policy on that? Or is that, and if that needs to be followed up on, I know that's kind of branching out maybe from what we're discussing, but-
We'll follow up on it, but it's really, the TWS double A is governing that and has set pretty well outlined rules and policies on it. We'll, for now, we'll follow that.
But any opportunity for MNPS to also, like, I don't know how the schools would be involved in that, but to, for revenue?
Yeah, so we do have some key partnerships with, is this okay for me to talk about Mark? So, for instance, with, what's the name of it? Under Armour is an example. They have partnered with schools in providing uniforms and equipment. The Titans have done the same thing. So, there are opportunities. They've not yet been district-wide, but we have had some very specific opportunities for partnership. In that way, just reflecting when I was principal at ANIOT, we did everything with Under Armour because they represented us and provided things for our young people. And so, they were under armored down, Mosays. But that, I think that also speaks to the opportunity for a level of sports branding, if you will.
Board Member Tyler?
And is that, so I know, so I actually coached in MNPS a million years ago. And back before it was consolidated, so longer than 13 years ago. And we, as the coaches, had to do all of our own fundraising. And then we had to go and, you know, I had to find a catalog, and I had to order our uniforms through that, and I had to go through the school system that way. And then all, I mean, so it was all, but it was all piecemeal, and it was not necessarily the most equitable thing, because if you didn't have a team that could support a fundraiser to buy new uniforms, you didn't get new uniforms. And if you didn't have a team that could support a fundraiser to, and like you had to pay for your own refs, and you had to, you know, pay to line the fields, and you had to do all that. And you, so it sounds like that is now being brought under the umbrella, so it's not individual coach-driven any longer. Is that correct?
It is still in a way individually coach-driven. But there are some things. In the old days, it got to where teams and schools couldn't make ends meet. It was just impossible. And we've taken some of those large costs. For example, security at games, so that it is not as burdensome. But at a team level, it is still coach-driven with fundraisers and ticket sales.
Yeah, and I'll also remind us, as part of our ESSER strategy, we did make a significant investment in our athletic programs, as well as our visual performing arts programs, to kind of get everybody back up to speed and level set as we're moving forward. So, we do have, we have tried to streamline like fundraisers and what those opportunities look like. You probably will see more consistency than in years past because of that, thanks to the great work of our finance team, helping really come alongside coaches in that work. But there is still a responsibility to prove as coach, as a coach, to have, you know, create the revenue to help support your team. But we've tried to offset those large purchases, as A.D. North has mentioned.
And then I also, I meant to say this earlier, and I just wanted to just highlight again, this access to health support, making sure that our students in the HERO program have free or discounted sports physicals is huge. That opens it up to students who would not have that access, would not even have the thought of that access. And so, that is huge to be able to do that. And I know for a fact that some of our students last year were given shin guards and cleats in elementary to be able to play, and they wouldn't have been able to participate otherwise. And so, that, and then also the EL support. I mean, I'm thinking of when I was coaching, trying to get back some physicals and when I couldn't communicate with the families. And so, this, to have that support baked into the system already is huge. Just to make sure that, I just wanted to call out the fact that I like the way you and your team are always thinking about what is the potential barrier, and how can I remove it? How can I make sure that this is accessible to as many students as I possibly can? So, thank you for that, and I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Student Board Member Nguyen?
Yeah, so just a quick question. At the elementary school level, are we ensuring that there is AEDs and athletic trainers on site? Thank you.
I'll just, it's a well-oiled machine, I'll tell you that.
Thank you so much. I just want to add, my son had the opportunity to participate in elementary school in the soccer program. Absolutely loved it. Parents turned out, community members turned out. Those were huge games. And really loved the foresight and the innovation that you guys provided in extending it to elementary school for students. So, really, really appreciate that, and thank you. The other thing is, I just want to co-sign, Member O'Hara Block, when she talks about school leadership and the importance of us really investing in professional development and coaching for our school leaders, because the research really shows that if we have phenomenal school leaders, we have phenomenal schools, and it really moves the needle. So, thank you, Dr. Battle, to you and your team for all the work that you guys are doing, not only for, to provide professional development for our teachers, but definitely for our school leaders. Thank you again. So, we will move on now to public participation. So, with public participation, there is a timer. Each person who comes up to speak has two minutes to speak. Member Tyler is showing you right here on your right-hand side, our right, your left. The little timer that's up there, it will make a funny beep sound at the end of your two minutes. And the names will be up here, so if you could line up as your name comes up, starting with Tariqa Davis.
Hello, good evening. Hi, I'm Tariqa Davis. I want to speak about the code of conduct, the compliance and enforcement, and also want to speak about the principal having total control and parents have no voice. Last year, I was banned from my children's school. And per behavior and expectations, I feel that I complied with the expectations due to the circumstances of that day. What I mean by the circumstance of that day is a mother protecting her child, which should have been done by the school. In March, my daughter was pepper sprayed at East Nashville High School along with bystanders, including my son. I received a phone call, not from the school, on what happened, but from my son's girlfriend. My son was outside with the teacher clearing his eyes. I arrived at the school office and immediately was approached by the girl's family that school staff had let in. And one of the family members, which I have previously emailed the principal about, which he have came on school grounds with a weapon looking for my son. The family finally went outside. The teacher, the teacher that my son was supposed to be with entered the office, and my son wasn't with him, and he was left outside. We heard a commotion outside, and the family was headed directly to my son. The teacher immediately ran out of the office and down the hallway. Me being a mother, I ran a little bit behind him. He was ahead of me when I got down the stairs. The teacher, along with the son and a couple of other students, was locked out. So, I opened the door and let them in. Now, far as the compliance and enforcement per the code of conduct, it states that visitors who fail to comply with behavior would be asked to leave. Repeated or severe violations, resort in a ban. Now, I'm banned for protecting my son because of my actions. My son is a senior. I have four children that attend the high school. He's a senior that plays football, and I support him. The only way I can see my son play football is sitting on a hill.
Thank you, Mary Crum?
Good evening. My name is Mary Jo Crum. I'm a 15-year teacher at the Academy at Old Cockrell, a parent of two MNPS students at Dan Mills Elementary and Isaac Litten Middle School, and I serve as the Secretary Treasurer of MNEA, our local teachers' union. MNEA joins SEIU and Public Schools Strong in calling on the school board to pass a resolution calling for increased and sustained federal funding. It was exciting to get ESSER money from the Biden-Harris administration. And our district has been recognized nationally for its wise stewardship of these resources. Students across the city have benefited from teacher professional development, building renovations, new learning programs, and improved technology. For example, my son's school, Isaac Litten, used federal grant funding to become a science magnet school. And my school bought several beautiful Promethean boards with ESSER funds. But the problem we now face is that without sustained reinvestment, these benefits will soon disappear. What will happen to the science magnet program when the funding is gone? And unfortunately, the functionality of our lovely Promethean boards is impaired by our slow internet connection. We need ongoing improvements to Wi-Fi and internet service to get the most out of the money we've already spent. And we need to be able to repair and maintain these learning tools as we use them and replace them when they eventually become obsolete. ESSER money was great while it lasted, but it was never enough. Its most important limitation was that the district was unable to use it for its biggest budget need, staff salaries. In order to increase pay for all educators, so that we can afford to live in this city, the district needs steady, dependable funding, not one-time infusions like ESSER and other grants. This resolution calls on the federal government to support our schools with the kind of financial commitment that would allow the district to pay teachers and staff a professional wage and retain them over a long career. I hope that you'll join us in advocating.
Thank you, Donna Clay?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Battle. I stand before you all today. I'm Donna Clay, I'm a lead at Inglewood. Okay. So, we talking about this funding, and Astro was trying to leave us. And now, we asking the federal government to fund us, fully fund us, like not halfway, but all the way. Because with the, sitting here, listening to them talk about how they helping the little kids in sports, that's major, because these kids need another alternative, really need another alternative. And that's, I think it's a good thing. But the funding, like the lady before me, for the employees to work and be able to live where they, you know, can afford to live. I couldn't stay in Nashville, in Davidson County. I've been here all my year, this is my 10th year for Metro, and I have not yet been able to stay here. I have to, I had to move to Laverne in order to live and be able to pay my rent, pay to afford to pay my rent. And I think it's very important that we get this funding, and it's funded for the school and for everything. I understand we got other things that need to be funded too, but keeping employees is, we are the foundation too. Support staff, we are the foundation. I think that's why it's very important that we ask for this government funded, you know, and be funded fully and not halfway, you know? It's very important. I hate to say this, because I see my colleagues, they working two and three jobs. And I'm going to keep on saying this. How can you come and work and be fully, do your job when you just left a second job, and then half a full nutritional service working for the cleaning company? Make it make sense to me, but it don't. I'm just saying, funding is very important, and I know you all know that already. And thank you all.
Thank you, Tom Surfus?
Good evening, Vice Chair, Dr. McKinnney, Chair Player, Dr. Battle, Director of Schools, and all, all Board Members. My name is Tom Surfus. I am constituent in District Eight. I am co-chair of NOAA's Education Task Force, and I am proud of the two kids that made it all the way through MLK, through MNPS, and proud Papa for them. And I really just want to be here to tell you that we and NOAA are supporting Public Schools Strong. And I want to thank you all for all of the service that you all provide, the leadership that you have provided to get our schools where they are, all of the great accomplishments. Thank you for those. And we want to support those, continue to make improvements, and we are with you as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandria Danner?
Good evening, school board members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Alexandria Danner, and I'm here today as a representative of SEIU Local 205, which represents both metro employees as well as MNPS support staff. I'm also here as a parent of an MNPS student. I'm speaking tonight to support the resolution calling on Congress to pass the Keep the Pact Act and to make sure our public schools get the funding they need permanently. During COVID, ESSER funds were a lifeline for our schools. They made sure students had access to the resources and the care that they needed during a really tough time for all of us. Those funds helped us step up and tackle some longstanding inequities here in Nashville. But now that those funds are running out, we have to ask, what happens next? What happens to our students, to the staff, and to the level of care we've worked so hard to build? The Keep the Pact Act is more than just a bill. It's a commitment to our kids and to our educators that their needs don't come with an expiration date. We need reliable, permanent funding so MNPS can keep giving our kids the education that they deserve. As a parent, I want to see my child and every child in Nashville thrive in schools that are safe, well-resourced, and supported by staff who can help them grow. And as a union rep, I see every day how hard our school employees work to make that happen. But without steady funding, their hands are tied, and it's the students who will feel it the most. I'm asking the school board to stand with your employees and with your constituents in supporting the Keep the Pact Act so every child in Nashville can get the education that they need, not just today, but for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ezra Howard?
Ezra Howard? Good try, girl, good try. That concludes public participation. We will now move on to governance. We're going to make a motion for the consent agenda as listed. Asking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
No, that was the agenda as a whole. This is the consent agenda, which are the items that are in-
Second.
In B. All right. All right. Any discussion? All right. And remember that we have to do a voice, a voice vote. Dr. Sevier?
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Taylor votes aye. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Young votes aye. Dr. Bob McKinnney?
Aye.
Dr. Bob McKinnney votes aye. Ms. Fane?
Aye.
Fane votes aye. Ms. Mays?
Aye.
Ms. Mays votes aye. Ms. O'Hara Block?
Aye.
Ms. O'Hara Block votes aye. Ms. Tyler?
Aye.
Ms. Tyler votes aye. Chair Player?
Aye.
Chair Player votes aye. Madam Vice Chair, that's eight ayes, one not present.
Thank you. So, that passes. Now, we will move on to the resolution calling for increased and sustained federal funding of public schools, and I'm going to turn it over to Board Member Tyler.
Hi. Yes, so I'm going to read this resolution. It is a resolution calling for increased and sustained federal funding of public schools. Whereas, public education is the cornerstone of our democracy, providing fundamental skills and opportunity to almost 50 million children, or nearly 90% of school-aged children across the United States. And whereas, in the decade following the Great Recession, students across the United States lost nearly $600 billion from disinvestments by states in their public schools. And whereas, prior to meet the critical needs of students across the country. And whereas, the federal government provided nearly $200 billion through three issuances of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act, known as ESSER, to states and school districts, including more than $450 million to the metro Nashville public schools. And whereas, the realized impact of ESSER funding is that it has benefited students' academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs through targeted and highly effective- through targeted and highly effective tutoring programs, after-school and summer school programs, access to technology, expanded meal programs. And, whereas, this investment also provided flexible dollars that allowed districts to make capital improvements, purchase curriculum, offer professional development, and hire sorely needed school personnel, including teachers, school counselors, and support staff. And, whereas, research has consistently shown that when increased education funding is spent effectively, it positively affects academic performance. It raises graduation rates, and it increases future earnings. And whereas, metro schools used the Esser investment so effectively, they were recognized in a Harvard-Stanford study on post-pandemic recovery as ranking third among the top 100 urban districts in math growth from 2022 to 2023, and sixth among the top 100 urban districts in reading growth from 2022 to 2023. And, whereas, on average, districts nationwide have relied on Esser money to support roughly 8% of their budgets over the past three years. And whereas, without an infusion of federal public education funding by Congress, it is estimated that, on average, districts across the nation will have to cut over $1,000 per student from their budgets. And, whereas, the loss of these funds will be felt drastically, especially in high-poverty school districts that have historically been underfunded, yet continue to serve students with the highest levels of need. And, whereas, the systematic and chronic underfunding of public schools is a strategy by those who want to dismantle the public education system to decimate the quality of education that public schools can provide. Therefore, be it resolved that the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education calls on Congress to immediately pass the Keep Our Pact Act and the IDEA Full Funding Act, which would create a 10-year mandatory path to fully fund both Title I and IDEA. Do I need to make a motion, or does someone else? Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Board Member Mays?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Tyler, for reading that. I wanted to be sure that it was read out loud for not only the people here, but for the folks that may be watching. It is extremely important. But even more important is how we get there. And we get there through making sure that we show up at the voting polls. Because, as we all know, that to get the congressional funding that we need, we have to have the right people in office. And if you don't show up and cast your vote for the people who are pro-education, that will likely not happen. So the resolution is fantastic, and I'm so glad that we're taking that step today. But we need everybody to do their part and show up at the polls to make sure that we can reach out to our congressional offices to advocate for this additional funding.
Any other discussion? None? All right. I do want to take this opportunity to thank you, Board Member Tyler, for leading this resolution, as well as partnering with SEIU and MNEA, as well as NOAA, who has supported this initiative as well. Be there no other comment. We're gonna take a voice vote.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor votes aye. Mr. Young? Mr. Young votes aye. Vice Chair Naba McKinney?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Ms. Fane?
Aye.
Ms. Fane votes aye. Ms. Mays?
Aye.
Mays votes aye. Ms. Wahrer Block?
Aye.
Wahrer Block votes aye. Ms. Tyler?
Aye.
Ms. Tyler votes aye. Chair Player?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, you have eight ayes, one not present.
Thank you so much. That resolution passes. Congratulations. Now we will move on to board reports. Chair Player?
Thank you. We had a Capitol needs report where we discussed redirection of students and schools and the feeder pattern for Hillsborough, Glencliff, and Antioch. There will be community meetings in the upcoming month, discussing those in detail with the public and soliciting public input, making sure that we are also adhering to the consent decree that we had passed earlier, but making sure that we're doing the correct aspects, but also making sure that the students get the resources that they need by flowing correctly, especially the population serves of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Player. We will also give an update on the director's evaluation. We will discuss Dr. Battle's final evaluation at our October 22 meeting, as well as discuss the extension of our contract. Now moving on to announcements. District Two is out. District Three? Oh, District One, sorry. My bad. I can't count. I can't count. District One, Board Member Taylor?
I don't know how you could forget that one is the first.
It's jet lag. It's jet lag. I apologize. I chalk it up to jet lag.
I will give you grace this evening. Don't let it happen again. No, I'm just playing. But I'm not really. All right, I got a couple of announcements. This Thursday, we are having a council District One community meeting led by Councilmember Joy Kimbrough at Cathedral Appraiser, 5:30, where I will have an opportunity to discuss some of the things that are taking place in education in our district, as well as answer any questions that folks may have. On the 28th, we have a Fatherhood Festival from 11:00 to 3:00 at IT Crestwell Middle School. The 28th is a packed day. There's also a teen voting summit from 9:00 to 12:00 at Maplewood High School that we're really excited about. And last but not least, Tennessee State University Football will have their Teacher Appreciation Day that begins at 5:00 PM until they get the victory at the Titan Stadium. The...
Did we get a victory or the victory?
The. I'll give you both. We'll see. I'm there for TSU. All right. So October 1st, I will be at Weston Middle School, which is a little bit out of my district, but we're supporting a community partner that works in District One, stronger than my father. They are having a tie-tying ceremony as a part of their new mentoring group at Weston Middle School. And then October 7th, which is the day after my birthday, in case anybody wants to send any cards or celebrate with us. There is a State of Bordeaux meeting where Merrill Connel will be giving the address to discuss the things that are taking place in the Bordeaux community at the Bordeaux Library at 5:30 PM. That's all I got.
Thank you, District Three.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This Friday at Stratford, we're having an unveiling of the historical marker to just gonna recognize the four courageous women that integrated Stratford many years ago. I think that's from 5:00 to 6:00. I think the ceremony's at 5:30. And on a personal note, I just want to share how meaningful this morning was. I went on a visit as first as a school board member to one of the schools in my district, and I selected this school for a personal reason. It was Dan Mills Elementary. And the principal there, Robbie Yates, was actually my fifth-grade teacher, just like five or six years ago, though. And it was a great experience, but it just reminded me of... It was a pretty full-circle moment to get to do that. But it reminded me of how important it is of what, not necessarily what we do, but how important the work is that our principals and teachers do, and that whether they realize it or not, some of the things they're doing can leave a lifelong impression to one of their students who might grow up and be the school board member for their district. And that's all I had.
Thank you, District Five.
No announcements. Oh, wait, I do have an announcement. As always, Pearl Cone. We will be having our homecoming this weekend, and I will advise everybody that's left in this room to buy a ticket, even if you're not gonna come, because, again, the tickets do help our athletics. Also, while you're there, we have these amazing fish sandwiches. Oh, my God, like, I'm so looking forward to Friday for that fish sandwich. I mean, I'm there for my son, too, but I get there early so that I can get that fish sandwich. And, again, that also supports our boys. Thank you.
District Six?
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we're gonna start at the very top here because it's necessary. So there was a lot of smack talk in this room. Yes, I heard. Put your head down, Dr. Bustino. Put your head down. A lot of smack was talked in this room about the little McGavick and Antioch Burnett Bowl. Second year that we've had the Burnett Bowl, and I have purposefully bought the trophy, which was won by the Antioch High School football team. Our Bears did an amazing job on Friday, and I will say that both Executive Principal Jackson and Coach Burnett were very, very gracious. They both stood there and they took that beating like real men. And it was a pleasure to beat your little... Yes, yeah. It was a pleasure to watch... Yeah, you know what? Anyway. Anyway. So it was... We had a great time. It was a very nice atmosphere. And let me tell you something. If you have not visited, gone to a high school football game on this new turf, you are missing out. It is absolutely beautiful. It was a very good atmosphere, and I'm so grateful and thankful. But I just had to rub it in because Principal Jackson did say, "You know what? I'm gonna take my medicine." I was like, "Yeah, you did." It was good, but I just had to, you know, make sure that trophy was here tonight, just for you. Well, you may as well, because let's get that right there. There we go. So the winning team is facing the audience. There we have it. Just a couple of other things, but I just had to get that too. The winners go to spoils. It was a great game, and so I thank you again for that. But just as a reminder, you may have not seen this yet, but it is once again time for... To sign up to participate in Pencils Principal for a Day. That will happen on November 8th. It's on a Friday. And you can go to the website pencilsforschools.org and sign up. I would encourage everyone to sign up to participate in Principal for a Day. It is absolutely one of the best events that you will participate in. On Saturday, October 5th, District 28, Council District 28, which is Councilmember David Benton, will have a community meeting. It will be held at 10:00 AM at the Southeast Branch Library, and all are invited to attend. Just a few other updates from Antioch High School. We currently have 21 students that are taking dual enrollment in Computer Science at Stanford University, 15 students taking dual enrollment in Medical Technology at Tennessee State University. And our marching band performed at UT along with other musicians. But one of the best things that I've seen in the last few days is our senior drumline members went to Smith Springs Elementary School to participate in an incentive celebration with the little ones. And it was just a beautiful thing to see, so they had a large time there. And I said, I kind of alluded to this a little bit ago, but just as a reminder, the last day to register to vote in Davidson County is October 7th. It's coming up very soon. And I will be holding a Vote Early With Me event on Monday, October 22nd, at 5:30 PM at the Southeast Branch Library. Last week, I spent time at Cambridge High School where we were able to get several students registered to vote, several first-time voters registered. And I wanted to provide an opportunity for those young people who are registered for the first time to have some support at the polls. So I will be going to... I will be holding a Vote Early With Me Day on Monday, October 22nd, as I said, at the Southeast Branch Library in Antioch at 5:30. And we will meet there, and we will walk into the polls together to cast our votes. And I'm really encouraging those first-time voters to come out and spend a little time hanging out with me and get your vote done. Get it done. Get it out of the way, and we don't have to think about it anymore until November 5th. And finally, I'm moving into the middle school phase of my T-shirt recognition. So tonight's T-shirt, Kennedy Middle School in Antioch. So... I'm sorry, what was that, loser? Thank you. That's all for tonight.
I'll eat my humble pie. District Seven? Board Member Player, are you still on? All right.
So this weekend, starting on Thursday, Thursday night through Monday night, every night at 7:00 PM, Hillsborough Players are gonna be performing Much Too About Nothing, a modern interpretation of the Shakespeare play in the courtyard at Hillsborough. It should be amazing. They do an amazing job with every performance that they do. Congrats to the J.T. Moore Boys on winning the cross-country city championship and to Hillsborough freshman girls on winning volleyball city championship. So good things happening in sports in lots of places.
District Nine?
Yes, so I have a lot of... Our Lawson freshman volleyball team finished third in the district, so congratulations to them. The Lawson golf team made it to regionals, so congratulations. We're really excited to see how far you'll go. I also wanted to let everybody know that Lawson's homecoming is this Friday at 7:00 o'clock against Hillsborough, so come on out and support your Lawson Lightning football team. Also, want to make a huge announcement that Early College High School was named a National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Secretary of Education. And I am so stinking proud of them. They are such a wonderful jewel. They started our early college program, and you can just see how far it has come by the type of accolades and rewards that they are getting, and they are so richly and well-deserved. So congratulations, Early College High School. I'm super proud of you, and I cannot wait to see how you continue to move forward. And finally, it's banned books week. So in 2023, the efforts to censor books and other resources in libraries rose by 65% from the year before. I shared info about all the things that are going on during banned books week on my social media pages, shares ways you can get involved to keep books available in libraries. On September 28th, it's being deemed Let Freedom Read Day. And we're all encouraged to share at least one action that you can take to defend books from censurships. If you share on social media, make sure you use the hashtag LetFreedomRead and hashtag Banned Books Week. So just make sure that we are supporting our libraries and our librarians and all the authors that we love and that we know and the books that are formative to our development and to our children, that we keep them available and so that you end up seeing students like the ones who attend Early College High School do so well. So, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Student Board Member, win.
All right, hello. So, yeah, this Saturday is the Teen Voting Summit. It's open to all students, 9th through 12th grade, regardless if you're within MNPS. It's a nonpartisan event, and you have an opportunity to win clear bags, Titans tickets, and meet your local elected officials. So be there, tell your kids to be there, tell a friend, and tell a friend. Kind of, it's kind of getting to that point, but there's opportunities to register. You need to register before. But, yeah, I think we all know how important this election is and that everyone needs to go vote. If you're not of voting age, you need to know about the opportunities available. And it's also the same day... I will be there, but it's the same day as our... And it's also the same day, I will be there, but it's the same day as our homecoming dance at Overton. The theme is Once Upon a Time, and it starts at 7 o'clock on Saturday. Also, speaking of voting and civic engagement, last Tuesday, the 17th, instead of being here, two Tuesdays ago I was here, I was on Nashville Public Radio's, This is Nashville, to speak about civically engaged young people. So I represented the Mayor's Youth Council, the Tennessee Center for Civic, Civic Engagement, and then, of course, you guys. So that was a really great opportunity. I've heard Clea Luccolona's voice since I was like four years old, so that was absolutely insane. And students, we are so close to the end of the quarter. Grades are about to be due, progress reports are gonna come out, so I encourage you to work hard, and that concludes my announcements.
Man, the power of our student board members. Man. And so, final announcements, just in light of fall break that's coming up, the second week of October, we will not have our October 8th board meeting, so make sure you put that on your calendars. Our reporters, make sure you note that as well. Appreciate you. Our next board meeting will be October the 22nd. Again, our next board meeting will be October the 22nd. I do want to send, and I know he hates this, but I like to do it anyway, just want to send an early birthday announcement to G. Braisedet. Sean, where are you? His birthday is Thursday. Happy birthday. Also, again, happy early birthday to Board Member Taylor. His birthday will be before our next board meeting, so just wanted to acknowledge that. As a reminder, Board Member Mays mentioned the last day for voting, I mean, for registering to vote. Early voting starts October 16th, and we also want to put out happy 35th anniversary to book 'em. They just had their celebration this morning, where our esteemed Dr. Battle received their Literacy Leader Award, and so congratulations to her, and... Okay, so, so congratulations, huh?
I'm trying to think who it was. I'm sorry.
So congratulations, and thank you for you and your team and all that you do to lead literacy efforts across our district, so truly appreciate that. And missed the other one, but that's okay, we can, we can get it at the next board meeting. But if we have no other comments, no other questions, no other concerns, we will adjourn the meeting. Have a great night.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.